Let's call the order and Mr. Levy, how about it?
Good evening, Mr. President and Council members. I'm Doug Levy. Here is your consultant on regional, state, and federal affairs. And here to do a couple of things tonight, but first on the agenda, I think, is a briefing for the council committee of the whole on Initiative 976. And I think you've seen the PowerPoint. We'll just go through that now and then decide what, if anything, the council wants to do beyond the briefing. So first of all, this is an initiative to the legislature, and it will be on the general election ballot. As a reminder, initiatives to the legislature are a little different than initiatives to the people. They are, they gather signatures, they're certified, they're presented to the state legislature, which then can either enact them during a session, provide alternatives to them, or simply not act upon them and let them go to the general election ballot. And in the case of Initiative 976, the legislature held public hearings but did not take any formal action, so it was something that proceeded onto this general election ballot, where it will be decided upon by the voters. So, oops. So I'm going to go through some of the impacts on state revenues, Sound Transit, King County Metro, Renton, et cetera. I do want a caveat that when we're talking about impacts, in the case of Initiative 976, we can tell you pretty much what it does as far as impacts. Remember that in a number of cases, those are going to depend on the actions of others, whether they be state legislators, or Sound Transit board members, or various county or city councils or the like. So what we can do is tell you some of the potential and likely impacts, but what definitively happens in a number of cases is going to depend. And in putting these together, we've looked at a number of resources, whether that's the Office of Financial Management's required fiscal note, materially, the Association of Washington Cities has put together, the ballot measure itself. So on the last page here, you'll see links to a number of resources, and you'll actually see the ballot title language itself. But diving into the impacts, if we talk about state revenues, what the initiative affects most of all is the multimodal transportation account, but it also does have effects on the rest of these accounts I've mentioned, motor vehicle account, ferry operations, several smaller ones. And then you can see the overall impact in the up, in the biennium that the legislature's in right now. It's about $478 million over a six-year period, $1.92 billion, and then over a 10-year period, $4 billion. By far, the largest impacts would be to the multimodal account, just under $1.5 billion over a six-year period, and then you can see the motor vehicle account number. Moving on to Sound Transit, Sound Transit projects an impact of approximately $20 billion through the 2041 planned completion of voter-approved projects, and they break down that $20 billion by pointing to the elimination of $6.95 billion in MVET revenues over a 20-year period, and then reduced financial capacity to the tune of just over $13 billion. So that's the Sound Transit impacts. As far as King County and Metro, and this is polled from a September 18, 2019 analysis, they are forecasting approximately $119 million in cuts to metro services between 2020 and 2025. And we may have someone coming from Metro who can help answer questions if you have those at the completion of this. In the analysis, Metro points to the loss of service areas on 74 routes in six named cities or areas. That list that's been provided does include Skyway, it doesn't include Renton proper. And then $1 to $10 million per year in cuts to metro services that are a result of cuts to formula grant funding, and $4 million in cuts to road services. Then there is an impact on cities which have established transportation benefit districts and use a vehicle license fee to support those transportation benefit districts. The vehicle license fee would be repealed under Initiative 976. So as you can see here, 62 cities use the transportation benefit districts with a vehicle license fee form of funding them, and there's the overall amount of vehicle license fee cuts. And then 13 cities in King County have those vehicle license fees, and I've listed them in alphabetical order for you. And the cuts range from all the way up to $36 million a year if you're talking about Seattle, or $105,000 a year for a smaller community in Black Diamond.
Mr. President.
Mr. Prince.
Doug, if, so if 976 passes and the vehicle licensing fee goes away, what impact is that going to have on TBDs into the cities who are already doing TBDs, or they have to look at one of the other funding options?
So Councilmember Prince, I think there'd be two potential options for those cities. One, they could look at other forms of funding transportation benefit districts that remain in the underlying statute, and that includes choices like sales tax and the like. Or they can hope that the state legislature provides some additional options under the transportation benefit district statute.
And then if another, if a city who doesn't have one currently decided they wanted to have a TBD, they'd have to look at one of the other funding options?
That's correct.
And just want to clarify to the public that Renton doesn't have any of these funding, is not using any of these funding options today, even though we could be.
Uh huh. And that's correct, and we'll note that later on in the slides. So from a Renton perspective, when we look at the state, we, you know, you can see that the multimodal account funds passenger and freight rail transit, bicycle and pedestrian projects, and then the initiative also impacts the State Department of Transportation, Highways and Local Programs Division, which receives about $72 million. As we cavauted earlier, when we talk about how the state is going to go about reducing its funding due to impacts from Initiative 976, that will be the legislature making ultimate choices on how to get there. What we can tell you is that the multimodal account is also used to help in funding Connecting Washington account projects. And obviously, the legislature, along with using cash sources from Connecting Washington, they use bonds to help balance out the financing of that program. So you have the potential, if there are few resources, potentially the legislature could rely more heavily on bonding. And then we've listed for you here, through Connecting Washington and local programs, again, from a Renton perspective, there's Interstate 405 and the 405-167 connector. Through local programs and the legislature, we've gotten funding for things like the Bronson Way Bridge and I-405-44th. And then looking at Sound Transit, Sound Transit has not stated where service cuts would be made or how reductions would be achieved. I can take any questions you may have, but that information is largely to come if the initiative were to pass. King County Metro has identified $22.8 million in cuts to regional mobility grant program awards for nine of their projects, including the Rapid Ride program. And in Renton, we have the existing Rapid Ride F-line up and operating, and the Rapid Ride I-line, which will be an Auburn-Kent-Renton connected line scheduled to come onboard in 2023. Metro, in its analysis, also identified a potential cut of 10,000 annual service areas to the Route 101 that travels between Renton and Seattle. As far as the city specifically, as the council president noted earlier, Renton does not currently utilize a transportation benefit district. Public Works has identified that as a toolbox item for the future, so obviously, if Renton looks down the road at a TBD, that impacts potentially how you look at that tool. So let's transition into what the city and the city council and staff can and cannot do when we're talking about an initiative. The city is free to provide educational and informational materials to the public, this being one of those known as the normal and regular course of doing business. The city council is allowed to take a formal position on the initiative, if you so choose, after holding a public hearing and providing equal time for the public to voice support or opposition. We've noted for you in King County for different jurisdictions that have approved resolutions, and staff can get copies of those for you if you wish. And then the mayor and city council members, as elected officials, have discretion to share opinions on ballot measures and initiatives when, at events, or in response to specific inquiries. In terms of the may-not-do, there is an absolute prohibition on using any city equipment, facilities, or property in support or opposition of a campaign, and there is a prohibition on making any statements that represent an opinion as to whether a ballot measure or initiative should pass or fail. We have one exception to that for elected officials, which I've gone over with you. So in terms of what action, if any, the council wishes to take, staff is not recommending an action at this time, because we did field one inquiry. We have put this on, if you so desire, for a public hearing on the 21st. If the council decides it doesn't wish to go that route, we would then cancel the public hearing. But in order to get that publicly noticed, that's been done as a preparatory item. And this is really a council policy decision, and as we've noted earlier, staff can provide additional materials and background as requested. And again, as I've alluded to, the final sheet, or the final slide, shows you a whole slew of information, resources, and links, and then the ballot title itself is excerpted for you word-for-word. So I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Bryan.
Yes, thank you. Doug, skipping ahead kind of to the next agenda item, I have to ask in this context, certainly you've outlined a lot of the funds that have already been identified that would impact us. Looking forward, noting that one of the items on our proposed legislative agenda is to fix the worst first, if this does pass, how much of a hole does this put us in in seeking future funding? How much harder does that make your job and our job, asking for funds for the state legislature for some of these needed projects in Renton?
So Councilmember McCurven, that's a difficult one for me to give you a precise answer. What we have done in the legislative agenda draft that you'll see in just a few moments is we've anticipated that if the initiative were to pass, one of our main jobs and missions on your behalf would be to do our very best to prevent some of the funding cuts and decisions by the legislature from being those that negatively impact you, that being the likes of 405 and the 405 corridor and the 405-167 connector.
Ruth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Doug, could you explain a little bit what triggered the creation of this initiative?
I can take a crack at that, Councilmember Perez. I think the promoter of the initiative has been, for quite some time, promoting the idea of the $30 motor vehicle excise tax. And I think the promoter of the initiative is on public record, talking about some concerns about the Sound Transit motor vehicle excise tax and what happened to those under the passage of Sound Transit Phase III.
I guess I'd look for a direction if the council wanted to have a public hearing on this, or just do nothing.
If may I, I just would like to clarify for the people that are watching this, that as you mentioned, Doug, this was initiated by, by the result of the ST3, to be more specific, and what was the dislike of some people from what they have to pay today for their tariffs. Nevertheless, the city of Renton has limited funds to be able to accomplish all the projects that we need within the city. So this initiative is affecting the city more than what is Sound Transit. A lot of people feel that they are connecting this to the Sound Transit without seeing the full picture, that this will offend local authorities like the city of Renton to be able to use more funding to the benefit of all the issues in daily business, from potholes to sidewalks. Am I correct?
I think that's an accurate characterization, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Bryan.
So my take on this, I mean, I would agree, you know, that there are, there's certainly a lot of anger, and I use the word anger very, very purposefully there, because that is, that is the reaction I've seen to the car tabs from people out there in response to Sound Transit area. But as Councilmember Perez says, to me, this is using a, I use the metaphor, a chainsaw to trim a hangnail, in terms of solving that problem, because it's so much bigger than that, in terms of what the impact is. And that is my concern, notwithstanding the impacts potentially with, you know, our early deliverables, that we were promised bus rapid transit arriving here in Renton. And this, while we don't know what the decisions that Sound Transit will make in that, it certainly puts that at risk if, from Doug, from your presentation, you're saying it's a $20 billion hole that that puts in their plans of that package. So I would have some concern as far as the impact here locally, but I mean, at the end of the day, I look at this as a, as a regional system, and we want it to work together. And anytime you take this much out of it, I think you put that whole system at risk and set us back. It's like a bad time travel movie to 1999.
Everybody else? I mean, we can do nothing? I, I hear a lot, a lot of anger about this, and I think Brian said it best, it's at Sound Transit. If there's a way we could just slice out Trans, Sound Transit, it'd be a lot easier. We can't do that, because that's, we have nothing to do with the initiative, so. I guess I'm of the opinion that, I don't know what good having a public hearing on this will do, but I want to do what the council wants to do as majority. Seeing nothing? Thank you for your presentation. And next up, we have the 2020 legislative priorities.
Thanks, Mr. President, and I think I'm on tap for this one as well. So we have before you this evening, as a draft, with the notion of having final approval after the November election, the 2020 legislative agenda, which, as is customary, is broken into key priorities on the first page that are put together after meetings with departments and division directors throughout the city, as well as our knowledge of some of the pending issues in Olympia and holdover issues from the 2019 session. So in the, in the document you've been handed out and emailed, you'll see those key priorities on page one that I'll go through. There are also a series of items where we call them supporting or opposing, or simply tracking and monitoring, and those are a series of issues where Renton is not necessarily in the lead, but we would join others in supporting them or opposing them if we have suggested that they'd be potentially damaging to the city's interests. So I will go through the priority items on page one, but obviously, at the end of the day, before you finalize this, this needs to be your agenda, so I'm happy to field any questions you may have on the entirety of it. You'll see that the agenda is put together in terms of looking at public safety, quality of life, fiscal stability and transportation, some of the broad categories where we've had ongoing direction from the mayor and council to focus our time and energy. So going through these, in terms of public safety, we've listed basic law enforcement academy funding and wait times as something where we would be very supportive of legislation that takes the current statutory wait time for newly hired officers going through the academy from six months to two months. As a practical matter, not sure how likely that will be in the 2020 session. It's something that was attempted in 2019 that did not pass. And we've also listed that we want to work to ensure that the SCORE jail facility receives a fair reimbursement rate from the Department of Corrections for housing DOC offenders, which typically make up about half of the SCORE population on any given day. On the quality of life side, we've listed here one potential capital budget request item. As a reminder, the capital budget that the legislature does, their big capital budget years, as well as transportation for that matter, are the odd-numbered years. So those are the years where they tend to have more capacity and deal with larger lists of requests. They use the even-numbered years for things that might be more of an emergency nature. What we have flagged here is that Renton's current cold weather shelter and feeding program are housed at the airport. As council well knows, that's not considered a conforming use, and you are currently weighing two proposals for a more permanent use at that old chamber building at the airport, which means that we would need to relocate the cold weather shelter and feeding programs. There have been some preliminary evaluations of a site on Rainier Avenue as a possibility for doing that, and we've flagged the idea of asking the legislature for some funding to assist with that. On the affordable housing front, we've had quite a series of discussions with council on substitute House Bill 1406, which provides over $500 million worth of state sales tax credits statewide over the next 20 years, and obviously, Renton will be looking to utilize some of its share. The statute currently talks about a qualifying local tax that can be utilized to maximize the amount of the state sales tax credit, and the way the statute currently reads, that would have to be done before the end of July 2020. We've learned that the city of Kirkland will be approaching the legislature to relax that timeframe and allow something like a November 2020 measure to be brought before voters, and from our perspective, that might better enable a strong voter turnout and, and something that gives the city more of a sense of where the public is. So understanding that there are still decisions to be made on that one, we've flagged this notion of allowing for a November 2020 general election as something that we would suggest deserves some priority time on our part. On the fiscal stability side, you'll very well recognize that first item. It's, it holds a perennial place on the agenda that we will spend a lot of our time making sure that state shared revenues, which are critical to the city, are preserved. The second item is one where we've had some preliminary discussions, in particular with State Representative Zach Hudgens, who has a committee chairmanship with some jurisdiction over cybersecurity. And as you may recall, the city has done its own assessment on cybersecurity and discussions that not only our city, but also the Association of Washington Cities and some other individual jurisdictions have had, is whether both statutorily and administratively, the state could play a bigger role in helping cities with both prevention and response to cybersecurity threats. So we've listed that here. And then on the transportation side, you heard the earlier question from Councilmember McCurven. We have noted here that if Initiative 976 were to pass, we think it would be very important for us to use time and attention and energy to try and prevent any of the significant impacts from coming down disproportionately on Renton and projects within. We've also noted the idea of additional local funding options for cities. There was a Joint Transportation Committee study of the funding needs for cities, and one of the big headline grabbers of that study that was just submitted to the legislature in June is that we have about a $2 billion gap between the maintenance and operations and preservation needs of cities and the available funding for them. So we know that the Association of Washington Cities will be leading an effort to broaden the menu of funding options available to cities, particularly in the transportation benefit district statute we discussed earlier, and we've noted that as a recommended priority item. Lastly, and some of you have been tremendously helpful with these discussions, the legislature has had some discussions and a 2019 bill around new revenue for transportation. There were lists of projects that went with that proposal in 2019. We think we'll see it further refined in 2020 and more discussion had. Don't know if we'll, we'll see anything like a new revenue package enacted, but regardless, we felt like it would be very important for Renton to be active in those discussions and talk about particular needs along the state system, one of which is getting the construction funding for the north eighth direct access ramp with 405.
Mr. President.
Ruth.
Thank you, Doug. Great presentation. I know that you have to keep going, but really quick, I have not been paying that much attention, so I don't know who is going to be the chair of the transportation committees still, or do we have anybody from our legislative committee as part of the transportation committee in the Senate?
So first, Councilmember Perez, exquisite timing. I had just gotten through the priorities, so this is really your time for questions and discussions. On your specific question, the chairs of the Senate and House transportation committees remain the same. Senator Steve Hobbs from up in the Lake Stevens area in the Senate, and Representative Jake Five from Tacoma in the House. As far as Renton representation on the committees that have jurisdiction in the Senate, Senator Rebecca Saldana is the vice chair of the committee, and definitely has a big chunk of Renton in her 37th district. And then in the House, State Representative Mia Gregerson of the 33rd district has some Renton precincts in her legislative district, and she is on the committee.
Thank you.
I want to, I'd like to talk about the enhanced quality of life, because we, we have a volunteer group that's doing a fantastic job housing and feeding the needy, those in desperate need. But I think we, I'm talking for myself, but I think I can read the council's concern. We do not want this to look like we're trying to make a regional housing and feeding program. I mean, we, we'll, we need to take care of our people, our citizens, but not become a warehouse for everybody in the whole South King County or the whole, whole King County, and that's just my personal feeling, so if anybody disagrees with that, let me know.
I think it's a great point by the council president, and we've, we would be emphasizing this as capital funding to help us with the feeding program and the cold weather shelter for those in the Renton community.
Okay. Any other questions on this? I think, I think we've all had a good chance to put input in this, and I, and I think we all agree, and thank you for doing an excellent job.
Thank you. And again, this was designed for a final approval from council after you get the sense of who is going to be the next mayor of the community and how the full council is going to shape up. So we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We only have one other item on the agenda, and as you remember, we discussed the need to change the to change the, the code on how the, the timing of the selection of the Regional Fire Authority governing board, and we gave specific instructions to the city attorney. They've written out ordinance doing exactly what we've said, and I have a, a committee report to sign so that we can address that this evening, as I'm looking for a direction. In that case, I'll sign it, and Committee the whole, unless there's emerging issues, I'm sorry, any, anything anybody wants to bring up? Okay, in that case, Committee the whole is adjourned.